Hi, welcome everybody to a special Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 10th, 2013. Tonight's agenda, we'll have citizens input. It's not on the agenda here, but I will honor it. And then, we have a gentleman named Richard Kobayashi. Kobayashi? I should have practiced that. From the Collins Institute at 7:00 to talk about possibly hiring their firm to help find a new town manager. And at 7:30, we have the Advisory Committee in here for the special town meeting warrant. And then, we do have a couple of action items. So, Jim, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody here for citizens input?
Gordon Green from Velda Drive.
Thank you, Gordon. Tonight, just so you know, Diana's not here. She will take the minutes from the videotape, just in case anybody's wondering why she's not here. She couldn't make it tonight.
Sure.
Okay. And if any other selectmen want to take minutes while the meeting is going on, feel free to help her out with that. Thank you, Gordon.
I stand here tonight as a strong, strong proponent of solving the town hall issue. We need to do it, and we need to do it right. But also, as a five-year member, a past member of the Advisory Committee, one of which was as chairman, I strongly advocate that you do your homework, provide them with a sound plan, give them the time that's necessary to vent it. So when you get to town meeting, we can get a positive vote. We cannot afford to spend $500,000, go to town meeting, and lose what we need. We need a town hall. I'm not advocating for a new one or a revised. I'm staying out of that. I do want to see it downtown. I think this is a great site, as long as what we design is compatible with the neighborhood. But give the Advisory Committee the time they need to properly vent the project so we get a positive solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to let Lorraine share this next meeting with the Collinsworth Institute because she is the one that's been doing all the groundwork for this. So, Lorraine, you can take it from here.
Thanks, Mark. Dick, do you want to join us at the table?
Hi. I'd like to introduce Dick Kobayashi. He's with the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management. And we all have our name tags here. Could we get a card for minutes?
Would it be helpful if I just introduced myself?
Yes.
Will this pick me up?
Yes.
Pull it closer to you.
For the record, first of all, thank you for inviting me. My name is Richard Kobayashi. I'm a senior associate at the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. By way of background, the Collins Center was established by the state legislature in 2008 to provide consulting and policy support services for municipalities and state agencies. It was named after Ed Collins, who was the first deputy commissioner for local government services in the Department of Revenue, who served the state ably for quite a few years. So that's a little bit about who we are, and who I am, and the origin of the institution. We are a part of the Commonwealth. We don't operate on a commercial basis. Virtually all of our contracts and work with municipalities is done on a negotiated basis. We don't participate in 30B procurements because all of our work is done on the basis of an intergovernmental agreement. So let me just, that's who we are and how we work. Let me give out a couple cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any extra issues? I have thousands, but I didn't bring thousands.
Hey, I have one number for the other reporter. Thank you very much, Richard.
I want to be very protective of the board's time. The dilemma any board of selectmen faces in choosing a new leader for the organization is the following, or the biggest risk a board faces, not just this board, but any board, is really the risk of facing the possibility of choosing the best candidate from a mediocre pool of candidates. Because in that context, somebody who's okay tends to look better than they actually are. So we view our job, in a nutshell, as making sure that, at the end of the process, this board has three to five exemplary candidates for the position of town manager in Foxborough, sitting with you here, one after another, and doing our best to put you in a situation. We have just a range of terrific choices, and the decision starts to come down to chemistry with the board and your judgments about whether this person's got the right leadership style to lead the community and lead the organization. Let me, did you have? I have too many things in my briefcase. Hang on just a second here. I have a one-page handout that might be helpful for conversation. Please, I can be interrupted at any time. Can you kind of send those around?
I think we already have that.
These are one-pagers?
Yeah.
Okay. One-page. Okay. The reporter would like a couple. Okay. It may not be identical, but it'll be close. There's two parts to our work. We have to get to know our clients and our client organizations, and we have to understand what the key challenges are that the town of Foxborough will face over the next three to five years. And we gain an understanding of that by talking to each one of you for significant lengths of time. We typically talk to department heads. We ask the Board of Selectmen's guidance about who else in town we should talk to. Usually, people say, "Well, you ought to talk to the Chair of the Capital Budget Committee and/or the Advisory Committee, and maybe the land use boards, if land use is a big issue in town." And sometimes, there are simply knowledgeable citizens who a board says, "You know, you really ought to check in with Mrs. X or Mr. Y so that for us, they get a fully, fully rounded view." So we have, you can kind of direct us on that stuff. When we're through with those conversations, we write a first draft of what we call a profile for the job. These are not identical. They come from different towns and different, but we always write a profile, and we try to get down on paper a general description of the town, the challenges the town faces, and the personal and professional characteristics that would make a new manager successful in the job. Now, when you write something like that, you never get it right 100% the first time. So we usually sit with the board and go through that as many times as we need to. And in the preparation of the document, we deal with issues like years of qualification, degrees, does the person have to come out of the city management profession, or can you, do you feel comfortable reaching beyond it? Salary. We provide information about your preferred time schedule, et cetera. So once we have this document finished, to your satisfaction, we ask the board to vote on it. Because it's really important that the words in the document represent the board's view, not our view. And once we have that, then we have something to market. We can market the town, we can market the job, we can explain clearly and succinctly what our client is looking for. The document really speaks. We don't advertise, we'll place all the advertisement, but we don't advertise until this document is finished. Because you never get a second, we put these documents up on our website, we write short ads for the MMA and the International City Management Association. Usually, that pretty much covers the waterfront. And what the ad says is, "Go to the Collins Center website, find the profile for the Foxborough Town Manager job. Most of your questions will be answered there." So, but the first thing a candidate, or potential candidate, will see about Foxborough will be this document. So, and you never have a second chance to make a first impression. So we want to get this document just right. And then, it becomes a marketing and recruiting tool for us. Have you thought about having a screening committee?
We have, actually.
Is that the, that's the general preference most places? Is that the likely scenario here?
We've discussed that, yeah. That's...
Yeah. I mean, I had envisioned, you know, as you do the search for the town, that at some point, we, as a group, would come up with a screening committee that you would then bring those five or six excellent candidates to, who could then bring forward the best to us for the final interviews. Is that what everybody else had in mind?
I think we discussed, I don't think we determined that was going to be our path, but that was brought up and sort of as an opening conversation.
Is that, do you see that approach?
Let me just back up a little bit. Under the open meeting law, this board can't hold preliminary interviews with candidates in executive session. And if you don't have a mechanism to provide confidentiality to applicants when they're having a preliminary interview, the pool, applicant pool shrinks right down. Because people don't want to take the risk on a 1 in 10, or 1 in 20, or 1 in 30 bet. So the only way to afford confidentiality is to use a screening committee, which includes less than a majority of this board. So they can have a screening committee with two members of the board, one member of the board, no members of the board. It's kind of up to your call. But it can't be three. And if it's constructed along those lines, the screening committee can interview candidates confidentially in executive session. The way we have found things work best is that we will probably get approximately 25 applicants for a job of this caliber. We would probably present maybe 12 or 13 applications to the screening committee, unranked. We will know all the people, we will have talked to them, we will know why they want to leave their present job, or why they have in the past, or what about this opportunity drew them in to apply. We almost provide color commentary as much as anything else. We'll really know the people, we'll know their current salaries and all that stuff. And in selecting what we call paper candidates for review by a screening committee, our orientation is to be inclusive rather than exclusive. You know, if we, the judgment is, you know, maybe the screening committee ought to lay eyes on this person on paper. In addition, we have found that it's best to provide the screening committee with a table that lists all of the applicants, both the ones we gave them, recommended to them, and the ones we didn't recommend. We found that people kind of like to see what the range of the whole pool is. And every now and then, is a member of the screening committee says, "Well, I don't see Dick Kobayashi's name in the deck that you gave us, but his name is over here on the list. I'd like to see his resume." So I reach into my black bag, where I have it, and I say, "Well, here's Dick Kobayashi's resume." And usually, people say, "Oh, yeah, I kind of see why you didn't advance him." But every now and then, somebody sees something in a candidate that we missed. We went through a process just like that in Great Barrington. There was a woman that we did not recommend to be considered for an interview. She was a staffer at a significant level in Mayor Bloomberg's office in New York City. I didn't think that she could likely make the transfer from that environment to a town of 7,000 in the Berkshires. And I was wrong. They said, "Oh, don't you know, Great Barrington is a suburb of New York City. Everybody here reads the New York Times. Everybody follows the Yankees. We want to talk to her." What's it do? They did, and they wound up hiring her. So there's something about us being as transparent as we can be with the screening committee that both builds confidence in the process. And sometimes, people see things that we don't see. Doesn't take a lot of time, but it's the way we work. Typically, a screening committee will interview somewhere between seven, eight, nine people. It varies. And they make a tentative decision on who they would like to advance to this board. And once they have made a tentative decision, then we check references, and we do the criminal history check, and the verification of educational credentials, and a credit check. Because it's not a good idea for a screening committee to report out, you know, its five top candidates to this board, and there's a lot of public interest, only for that to be followed by embarrassment downstream, when it's, with a couple weeks' time, you can kind of clear up most of that stuff. So we do that. And once the screening committee hands off the, its recommendations to you, our work is about 95% complete, and we'll provide guidance to the board in setting up an interview process, and make some suggestions about questions or community process. But it's pretty much a clean handoff from the screening committee to this board. And then, at that point, our work is pretty much done. We try, every now and then, we do on request, but we don't get involved in contract negotiations with the finalists, those kinds of things. And there's a reason for it. And that is, settling on the contract with your preferred finalist is the first important joint decision this board and the new person are going to make together. It's really important that you be able to work that out together without, you know, if you need a mediator in the first exchange, not always a good sign. And you get to know each other while you're doing that. Now, meanwhile, we're on standby in case there are difficulties. But there really are, if it's been a good process. Let me just stop right there and ask if there are any questions.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Looking through the information, Lorraine, thank you for putting some stuff together for us. There was the profile that you put together for Framingham, and this is all public information, so it's...
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
I don't think it's proprietary. But I did go further than that, and I looked at the scope of services that you put together for Framingham, and your name was included on the resume. So are you familiar with that Framingham process?
I wrote it. I wrote it. I led it.
You weren't on the cover letter, that's why I asked, but your resume was in it.
Our director is always on the cover letters.
Okay. So having gone through that process, and looking at the proposal and the scope that you put together for Framingham, I was quite impressed with the, and similar to what you had just described on the screening committees. Now, Framingham is a population of 68,000. It's got a lot of, it's a town, but it's got stretched that it could be a city.
There's a lot of city characteristics.
And they've got headquarters, corporate headquarters there, and different sectors. You've got the Route 9 corridor, you've got the other areas, and it's got a lot of open space, too. Having gone through that process, and looking at their scope of service, what little that you know of Foxborough, would you approach it the same way?
I prepared pretty much a mirror image of that proposal, and had sent it to Lorraine. So somewhere in...
I can distribute that.
It's pretty much the same proposal, the same four tasks.
Okay.
And we use this, you know, we use the same methodology in Great Barrington, which is 7,000, as we did for the Chief Administrative Officer for Springfield, which is whatever it is, 150,000. You have to know the client, you have to document what the needs are, you have to be able to sell, you have to be able to sell the job because you want people who are not looking for jobs to consider applying. Not everybody who's exactly right for the Framingham job is looking through the help on it. So whether it's a modest-sized place, a simple place, or a very complex place, and Foxborough isn't large as Framingham is, but it's complex because of all the activity. If you didn't have, if you didn't have all the activity on Route 1, including the football stuff and everything that goes with it, this would be, you know, a modest-sized New England suburban town. But it is a New England suburban town, but it has all this, this mega-real estate development grafted onto it. And that makes, the town has to be able to deal and negotiate in the big leagues with big players. And, you know, you have to do, have to get the trash picked up like everybody else, and people like it when you dial 911 and a police car comes. And, you know, all those things that exist everywhere, but there's a very complicated overlay here.
Dick, that actually leads me into my question, is you mentioned before that if you wanted to stretch beyond the, sort of, the town manager population, people that are currently working in town manager positions, and sort of look into maybe the private sector for possible candidates. Can you give us an example of how you've done that, and if you've placed anyone that has come from the private sector?
Bob Halpin, the current manager of Framingham, Massachusetts, was a Chamber of Commerce executive before he came to that position. Before that, he was either the number one or number two person in Merrimack Valley, the economic development, real estate development consortium. He had not, earlier in his career, he had been a town manager. He had not planned to re-enter the profession, but we pitched him on Framingham.
Do you get that request a lot? Do you get that thought a lot when you meet a town?
I'm sorry?
The thought to go beyond the population of his existing town managers?
Yeah. I mean, sort of like outside the traditional, yeah, and I know what you mean. The question comes up a lot. Here's the, you know, you have to help yourselves, and you have to help us specify what the criteria are when we do the document.
So you're saying we'll sort that out in the process?
So, I mean, this has to be, you know, if that's something that you want, we need to get it into the document. I mean, those become our sailing orders. That document becomes the sailing orders for the screening committee.
It's not necessarily a want, it just, it expands the possible pool.
But then, here's, here's, let me do, let me flip this a different way. Here's where people with, who come right out of the private sector have difficulty. Not all of them. And there are many wonderful managers and skilled people in all elements of the private and the nonprofit sector. The one thing, if they've had their entire lives in that world, that is, tends to be difficult, is they have not much experience working in an environment where all decisions are made in a public forum, and everybody is equal. Decisions are made usually in some kind of hierarchical form, and they're made in a conference room. There's no media there. It's a fundamental cultural difference. Some people can cross, cross over that bridge, some find it very, very difficult. What has worked, what we have seen work in our own practice, which is, is that people who are from the private or nonprofit sector world, who have, you know, half a dozen years as a selectman, or Advisory Committee Chair, or something, where they've done that and also have been embedded at the citizen level in a community, kind of have the management skills, and they understand that they're going to be in a different culture right away, and what the rules of the culture are. That's our experience.
Fair enough. One other question. Why would folks choose the Collins Institute versus going to a traditional recruiter, a non-governmental agency? I mean, obviously, you're not placing all town managers, you know, every opening doesn't come to you. I'm just wondering why you're better, and why we should consider the Collins Institute.
Well, we're part of the Commonwealth, we're not going away. So, there weren't, there's no formal warranty, but the, you know, we're here. You know, if there's a mistake, we'll be around to clean it up. But that's a negative reason, not a positive reason. We're dedicated to helping municipalities secure better governance. That's what we're about. That's what our core mission is. We don't have to upstream any part of our fee, you know, to the mothership so it can be reported on a profit and loss statement. So we're not under, we're not under economic pressure by a corporate owner. We can put in as much time as it takes. We have a very good track record. We've done about 30 of these since we started in 2008. Every one of the people that we've participated in placing is still in their job, with one And that, that exception is a consequence of the board that hired that person becoming Different board wanted a different kind of person. You know, that's, you know, that's okay. I mean, if you don't have, if that's not within the parameters, then you don't have democratic local governance. It's a risk of the trade. So we think we're pretty good at this. We're committed. I think, if you care to check any of our references, people say positive things. We worked in little places, we've worked in big places. This is a complex environment. You know, we hired the first... You know, we hired the first Chief Administrative and Financial Officer for Springfield, which was a precondition to the city coming out of quasi-state receivership. We kind of did the same thing for the Somerville Housing Authority within the last year. Hire, help them hire a new executive director. But we've always kept, we don't play favorites. We'll never go to a meeting with the screening committee or this board and say, "Boy, if you don't hire Mr. Jones, you're out of your mind." We don't play favorites, we don't sponsor candidates, we manage the process. Let your committee and this board decide. If we see somebody's missing a piece of information, went right by them, we'll kind of say, gee, golly gee, did you notice? And so we're in there as a kind of a mentor, coach, facilitator. But it's very important, in our view, that this board hold tightly to its prerogatives. The people elected you to run the town, this is a very important decision. The manager here wields a great deal of formal and informal power. Mr. Goller was here for several decades, it's a well-established position. But it's your call on who the next person is going to be and we're here, here to help, help you make a good call.
How do you find candidates that aren't necessarily looking without somehow jeopardizing their current positions? How do you get them to sort of come out and submit a resume or come talk to a town?
Having done this a lot over the last five years, we kind, at least within the state and New England, you kind of develop a pulse, feeling of, a pulse of the profession and where people are on their careers and, you know, and we get calls from time to time saying, you know, I've done everything I can here. If something interesting comes up, I just want to let you know, I'm ready for a move. They can call us and we maintain confidentiality. We call up people and say, gee, I don't know if you've, if you've seen the advertisement, but given where you are in your career and previous conversations, you might want to take a hard look at Foxborough. But that, you know, that's a call to a personal number or, or an email to a personal email, it doesn't... And people apply through us because they trust us on the confidentiality level. They know that we work very hard with the, with the screening committees so that the screening committees understand the executive session rules and that we're dealing with people's lives and careers here. And our screening committee members throughout have really been excellent in terms of maintaining confidentiality. And if there's no trust in confidentiality, it kills the pool. So that's, so reputation plays a role. But a lot of it is we have a database, we do direct outreach, not everybody's reading the help wanted in the MMA. This is an interesting enough place and an interesting enough job, so there would be, I expect considerable interest from, with outside the Commonwealth. I asked, I asked a retiring manager who came here from Maryland whether we found it difficult to adjust to New England Town Meeting, former governor. Said, you know, the Town Meeting does the same thing every other legislative body does. It appropriates money, it passes laws, it approves land transactions. The only problem is, you don't know who's going to show up. But the selectmen usually know. So it, you know, and, you know, you have to plan more because it only meets a couple times a year. But it's, there's a lot of custom and there's a lot of tradition here. But if you get somebody with the right interpersonal and leadership skills, once, once they've gone through the cycle, once, having spent twenty years going to Town Meeting, kind of, kind of fades as a criteria.
One last question.
Sure, go ahead, John.
The Collins Institute, are you, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you an independent contractor that works on behalf of the Collins Institute?
No, me personally?
Yeah.
I am an employee.
An employee, okay.
I'm a W-two employee.
Okay, so we would be contracting with the Collins Institute and hopefully be working with you?
Your contract would be with the University of Massachusetts, Boston. I would be the lead consultant, I am the person that you would see. I would be assisted by Mary Icardi, who's got twenty-five years of municipal HR experience. And we always put two experienced people on a project that enables us to always meet the town's schedule. We're never in a position where we have to say, golly gee, can't make that schedule because my brother's getting married. So it's, I'm in, I'm in the lead, I'll do all the interchange and work with the members of the board and any other senior people. Mary usually interviews department heads and others and sometimes we simply do be after work.
But you'd be a primary point of contact?
I'd be the primary contact, all the way to the end.
Just a quick follow-up. We're under statutory requirements to hire a town manager, strong town manager, within a certain period. We've got an interim or an acting that just can't go on indefinitely. I've looked at some of the work that you've done in some of the towns, it's, you say between ninety and a hundred and twenty days. Some may have gone a little bit further because there were multiple positions, some a little quicker. But what would you feel is an ideal if everything goes well with our board on setting up the initial meetings and the subcommittee meetings, for you to do your work ideally, what duration are you looking at?
I think what's important is that a screening committee, that there's certainty that a screening committee can make a recommendation to this board in the interval between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Not later, not later than that. Once you pass, everybody knows this, once you pass Thanksgiving, the holiday season is our enemy. You can't get, on any given day, who can meet? Well, only half of the screening committee, guaranteed, because family and business obligations. So it would be important to get started as soon as possible and work as diligently as possible so we can get to that position. The screening committee doesn't have any work to do until, until the deadline is closed, we've looked at the resumes and we make a package for them. And then they need to work diligently for somewhere around the order of four to five, four to five weeks. And then they, by that time, they're typically ready to make a tentative recommendation. And our job is to check the references and if the references are okay, all they need to do is meet twenty minutes before a selectman's meeting to vote their recommendations publicly and then report them to you. So there's, there's a concentrated period there. And there's no reason, once this thing isn't set up, that, that we can't calendarize it so that we're all, so that we're all disciplined.
Thank you.
If that's, I hope that's helpful.
It is, yep.
Ginny?
Just a time frame, to produce this document takes about how long, obviously meetings with us and other department heads?
Well, there's, here's, probably, you know, the minimum two weeks can probably guarantee it in three. And some of that has to do with, we spend time with you. We're happy to send it out and get individual comments from selectmen and stuff. But in the end, we need to get a document to the board as a whole for it to act on. You can vote on it or you can amend it. And some of that has to do with frequency of the selectman's meeting, but we'll try to coordinate that and schedule ourselves so it can be done as quickly as possible. Just, John, just another part of that, as soon as the board approves the text, we post a text version of the document on our website, black and white PDF. Then we send it to the printer to get, get the color. So we don't, we don't waste time with the, you know, a week with the printer, putting a picture on and stuff like that. But people like the pictures.
Ginny? Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Ginny.
You'll be definitely advertising in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but did you say you'll be going beyond the boundaries of Massachusetts, like to New England and even beyond New England? Or is that something that you don't do, people come to you?
Thanks to the World Wide Web, a local search is a national search. People in this trade follow the publication, who are looking for jobs, follow the publications of the various state municipal associations. And so if we have something in the, in the mass municipal association job thing and we have something in the International City Management Job Posting Service, between those two things, we've covered the North American universe. For people who are in the trade, for people who are in the, in the public administration trade. So that's, that's, that's pretty efficient and people all over the place read these things.
And also, will we be privy to the questions that you are asking the applicants? So, so we'll know what information you've solicited from the applicants to get a better understanding of your recommendations?
Well, the recommendation that comes to the board is going to come from the screening committee that you appoint. And once we're finished with the profile, our principal interaction will be with the screening committee. So the screening committee will get, the screening committee will get our take on the applicants in terms of, this is where Dick Kobayashi in his career, and this is why he's, you know, he's applied here. And they will hear the answers, they will interview the person and ask questions.
But there's, will there be just a regular set of questions that...
There's set questions, I mean, the general rule is you have to ask each applicant the same set of questions. It doesn't prohibit follow-up questions or a few digressions, which, but otherwise you can't, you can't compare them.
But, but it would be nice for the screening committee to know what questions were asked so they can get an idea of what the answers mean. Do you get what I'm saying?
Typically, we write a guidance memo for the screening committee and say, well, based on the profile, here are, here are fifteen questions that you might consider answering. And by the way, you're free to combine some of these or add some of your own or whatever, but, you know, by the time we have the first interview, you need to know which questions you're going to ask and who asks them and what, and whatever. So we kind of coach the committee. What the, the committee needs a written charge from you that specifies what its duties are. Because if you don't have it later on, say, was that three or was it five we were supposed to bring forward? Sometimes they think they're supposed to do our job, you know, so we have, we have, we have a draft charge that we can provide you. What we do recommend is that the screening committee recommend to the board three to five candidates, unranked, give you the application materials and let you take it from there. And that leaves you free, you know, the winnowing is, and filtering has been done. You know that your committee is comfortable, that any of these people can do a capable job. And then you can sit down and have the heart-to-heart with these people yourself and ask any questions you want to and we're happy to provide a guidance document on that. But, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes boards of selectmen say, yeah, they should come here and they should interview with us, but we ought to have a coffee clutch over at, you know, someplace to interview them so they can meet the, you know, the committee people and the department heads and, you know. And all those people kind of give you feedback and you know that this goes on. I mean, if there's a candidate here or anywhere, you know, there's a network. The department heads here, whatever department they're a part of, will make inquiry about where the, where the, places where the person has worked before and call up their counterparts and say, well, whoa, what was Dick like to work with? You know, and all of that data, I mean, because we're in the public forum, all that data's available. It'll come trickling back. It'll come, it'll, it'll come to you. And, you know, that goes into the part of your decision-making, it's actually a helpful thing. I bet there's ten thousand people in, in Foxborough who know how to use Google. And, and, you know, folks, folks in town who are interested in these matters will have Googled all of the, all of the finalists. But that's okay, we will have Googled them first. There won't be any, there won't be any surprises. And anybody in a job like this who's dealt with serious issues and made important decisions will have some news stories about them that are characterized by some degree of controversy. Because it kind of, it kind of comes with the territory. So I didn't, I didn't mean to sort of go and beat around, beat around the bush there. But between us and the screening committee, you'll, you'll get good candidates. And, and because they're unranked, you can put your own eyes on them and make your own, your own judgment. And pretty much all of the factual data that the screening committee had or that we have had will be available to you. Because it'll be in the application or it'll show up in the questions you ask or...
You have a question?
I'm good.
Just as the process goes forward then, if, you know, we take the next step and you begin meeting with all of us, at what point do you start working to pull together the screening committee? And could you, would you be providing us with some examples or approaches to identify the members of that screening committee?
For another town, I recently wrote a couple of pages on different options for a screening committee I'd be happy to send that electronically. And, you know, look, there's all different models. We just finished very successful work in Drakken, Massachusetts, thirty thousand people, in which the board decided that each member of the board of selectmen would appoint one member of the screening committee. So it kind of mirrored, it mirrored the board.
That's a good idea.
And it was, you know, and, but the committee didn't function, you know, like, like five individuals from the very beginning. They functioned like a real working committee that needed to make a collective decision. It worked out very well. We had one client where they put an ad in the newspaper and on the internet and asked people who were interested to apply and thirteen people applied and they didn't know how to say no to anybody, so they appointed everybody.
I like that idea, I think...
And the outcome of the search was, was fine, but it wasn't, it wasn't thought through what you wanted. Sometimes we have had, not too far away, in Hanover, a gentleman leaving after twenty-five years, the selectmen put two of themselves, two selectmen on it, a former selectman, a former selectman from another town who was resident and then resident in the town, and one citizen. These people, these people made a decision that this was important, they wanted to hold it really close. Framingham's a different kind of place, sixty-eight thousand people. The Framingham tradition is to do things by twos. Every selectman appointed two people to the screening committee. It made the process very long because... It made the process very long because it's hard to get common dates for 10 people to meet. So this, this, I'll, I'll send you something and it's worth, it's worth thinking through.
Yeah, that'll be helpful for us.
So, all, even the one where they had 13, it worked out okay in the end.
I guarantee we won't have 13.
No.
But I, but I'll, should I send it to Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay, and I can forward the sample agreement that you had sent to me.
I'll send you that and I'll send you a, a draft charge to a screening committee. You know, and you're certainly free to adapt any of these, any of these things to your own purposes.
Great, well, I appreciate you coming, it's been very informative, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, please don't hesitate to contact me if there are any questions and.
No objection if the different members contact you directly, that's fine.
That's you. You know, if it's a chat, if, you know, if it's a factual question, send me an email. If it's something that needs to be discussed, call me. And you're certainly free to call any of my, any of our references.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I could actually answer.
Yes, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, moving on to a special town meeting warrant. Last meeting we had was. No, we can't make it tonight. He had to probably contribute.
Commitment.
Commitment. But the, the board had brought it down to seven articles. And then I'm gonna ask right off the bat, if, if anybody has a major issue with that, going with those seven articles. We had Sharon here. And she said that they really needed, was it two at the time? Pushed through. And are you still comfortable with what you have now on the warrant?
Mr. Breeder, do you?
There, we had.
Twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, two, the innovative development and the.
I'm gonna get yelled at by the people at home. Well, twelve and thirteen, and now our number is?
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Okay. And Bill's suggesting the innovative is?
Yes, the innovative and the rec grant, the two that would be requested.
Was old Article VII is what Bill's talking about.
So it'd be three total?
Two.
Which is now six and seven.
Which is now six and seven.
No, he's looking for a different.
So seven is the forfeited bonds, so that was, would come out?
Not well, because of the numbers, it's the, our numbers for our public hearings are labeled one through seven. So the numbers don't match up, which is why I picked the topic. The two topics, the two headers were innovative. The actual title itself was. Innovative residential development. That is two subcategories that are very important to what we're currently doing with a couple of projects.
Was that the microbury?
No.
That was the shared driveways.
Okay, yeah.
Eight hundred foot road.
Okay.
So that, so that's my question. So that one is not on here, but the ones, the two that are on here, irregardless of the numbers, is the grant application, the grant acceptance. And then the MGL Chapter 4181, which was the forfeited bonds. So that would be three.
If you include the forfeited bonds, yeah. We, forfeited bonds, yeah.
But just for clarification, we had asked Sharon to highlight, and we were told that these two were the two that you needed to have.
Well, with all due respect, you asked Sharon to do it, but she hasn't got a chance to talk with the board. So after your meeting, we started scrambling, saying, well, of the, of the items that we have.
What is the priority?
Yeah, what are the two that, that we're really working on?
Okay. So the thought is to substitute that, that one for the forfeited bonds one?
Right.
Yeah, that'd be fine. We can, we can return to you, we can do a future special or, I don't know.
Sharon, do you have the old with you, the old?
Yeah, it's the old Article VII.
The old Article VII will, will become the new Article VII?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit? Cause we didn't discuss it at our last meeting.
So amending the zoning bylaw, so this seven's out. And then you go on to. And that's the, to add G.1.1.5, is that correct?
It's the one that says innovative residential.
Yeah, that's the one with that.
Okay.
G.15.
G.15 in the use table and then Section 8.5. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, so is everybody okay with that? Anything else?
And the, the public hearing is scheduled Thursday evening. We will have a written report, thorough written report to the AdCom by Monday morning. So we'll do our best to get them the information so that they can evaluate it.
Be great, no, that'd be very important.
Are you gonna be here Thursday night?
I will, sir.
You gonna use this room?
Yes.
That was the next question. Since we're having the public hearings, how far along are you with having committees have to go to an alternate, alternative space? Because if we have to continue these, we're looking for, we have to do a date and time certain.
We're, we're, this is our last meeting here, we're going to the high school the 15th.
You are, but will it be available or won't be available until?
We're, we're still like a couple of weeks out. So.
So I should find somewhere in October.
I've been working with the library and I compiled a list we should have, I'll, I'll be able to get Sharon the information.
Yeah, we'll have it at the department heads meeting on Thursday morning. I can share it with the board Thursday evening.
Does your notice have to?
Say specifically where.
Or if there's a mistake and it gets moved as long as noted, noted on the door to where it's been moved to.
Well, it takes people.
Rather not do that, but.
We got cited for doing that, so that was a previous group.
Shame on you.
Yeah, so we don't wanna run that, that going up.
All right, anything else the board can help you with?
I had wanted a vote on the P Wed grant, the Mass Works grant.
And the, the action, right?
Yeah, you should have a one-page memo.
Yes. Okay, Sharon, that's right, we'll take that action item up right now.
All right.
You wanna explain that?
Okay, Mr. Barrows and I met on Friday with Mass DOT's Public Private Development Office. Mass DOT was requiring that the Big Y construct and pay for a light at Central and Commercial Street, which is 1.7 miles from the Foxfield Plaza. And they were requiring that as a condition of the curb cut permit to redevelop the Foxfield Plaza site. Big Y in December of 2011, when they cited the reasons that they decided not to proceed in Foxborough, specifically mentioned the cost of that light. So we went to see Mass DOT to see. MIPA had only required that the Big Y design the light and pay 5% of the cost of the light, which was their share of the traffic going through it. It was Mass DOT that decided they should pay for the whole thing. And we went to see MIPA and tell them the project was killed because of the traffic light. MIPA only required that the applicant design the light and pay their share, which both Big Y and the proposed new applicant were fine with. And we were looking for some flexibility with them coming out of a bad recession. And their comment was, well, apply for a Mass Works grant. So I've been staying up very late applying for a Mass Work grant. One of the requirements is that you guys, should the grant be funded, you will accept the funds on behalf of the town of Foxborough.
Great work, Sharon.
Two, two years ago, it was 600,000, I'm guessing it's more like 750 now, but Bill Buckley's working on that number.
Sharon, the deadline for that is this coming Friday.
So you need to go to the board to authorize me or the whole board to sign?
To authorize the production of a certificate, which states that in the event that the grant is funded, the Board of Selectmen accept on behalf of the town of Foxborough.
Is this, do they have to do anything with this form, Sharon?
You then have to sign it as certifying that that took place.
Okay.
So.
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that we authorize the chairman to sign the Mass Works grant application, brought to us by Sharon Wasson, Town Planner.
Discussion, all's in favor?
And you need Mark to be available to sign that, is that the deal?
You can sign it now and we'll just put the stuff in.
You have the application?
Of course she does.
The form's right there.
This form?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we need the second motion about the acceptance.
To accept in the event that it's funded.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so motion to produce a certificate. In the event that the application for the 2013 Mass Works Infrastructure Program to the Commonwealth is awarded, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough will accept the state funding.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all's in favor? I, I zero.
Sharon, thank you, and I assume Jay Barrows is very active in this as well?
Much more than I am, sir, thank you, yes, so.
Appreciate it.
Name, title, date, sign or just print?
Yes, sir.
Just sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, 5% to full funding is a big jump for.
It's a big jump.
And they do that often, last couple of years.
It's a small, it's a small project.
I go through there twice a day, a light would be helpful.
And it's, it's already failing. If this development caused it to fail, that would be one thing, but it's already at F.
Right.
So, you know.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see Bob here from Water and Sewer, your two articles are in here. So you're content?
Yes.
All right, AdCom, we asked you to come, I appreciate it. Anything you wanna add to the, we have seven articles now?
What's the date?
The date we're gonna discuss in a second, I, I did not have the conversation with Frank Sblain.
I did.
It was Lorraine, you did, right? Was it you?
I had a conversation with Frank Sblain. Sorry, just one sec. I spoke with Frank about different possibilities for dates. And, you know, we were talking about November 12th. And Frank said that as town moderator, he would prefer that we would have it on the 4th. He prefers a Monday. And felt that we would have better attendance on a Monday. Thought it might be potentially missed by some people, having it a Tuesday after a holiday. So his preference was for the 4th. And I did have a discussion with Paul Defazio. He said, you know, I could mention, we talked about this. And so I would suggest we look at that. That gives an additional two weeks from the original suggested date of October 21st to the advisory committee. And the other thing that we talked about, that I spoke to Paul about, was the idea of prioritizing the warrant so that the, everybody on advisory committee could, you know, focus on potentially the top priorities and hopefully be able to have the time to fit in everything in that timeframe. So that was, that was basically my conversation with both Frank and Paul.
I, I also talked to Frank and I, we, I don't think we got the same story because Frank said the 18th would've been okay with him had the auditorium been available.
Right, but we don't.
But no one's sure who's booked the auditorium.
We, we've talked to the school and the dates they gave us were the 4th and the 12th.
Fourth and the 12th, that was all the.
That's it, yeah.
And Frank picks the 4th.
Right.
It gives him two more weeks, we reduced it by six articles.
Okay, so.
Number four is a Monday, 17.
The 4th or Tuesday, the 12th, Frank was not, I think Frank was a little worried that there'd be confusion about the 12th and Tuesday.
Right.
That happened when we piggybacked state election. There was a lot of people confused.
So are we focusing on the 4th?
Yeah, I think we are.
I'd suggest it, I think it gives a couple of extra weeks.
Yep. How are you feeling about that? Anybody wanna speak on behalf of AdCom?
Larry Thomas, Sixth Norton Street. You know, it's still awfully tight, it's probably four weeks that we would have cause we have to finish two weeks ahead of time to get our recommendations into the newspaper.
Well, actually, for specialty, you only need a week before. And actually, it says in the bylaw, you need a day before.
But logistically, in order for them to get it in and everything else, we typically have to have it done two weeks ahead of time.
Well, you, you can get it a week ahead of time.
Well, okay. So, all right, so we subtract a week. I mean, it's, it's just really tight, there's, there's a lot on there. You know, I mean, well, all we can do is what we can do.
Okay.
Gordon Green was here earlier tonight and he made a, I think, a fairly impassioned plea that here's our one chance to get this right. If there's any doubt, misinformation, uncertainty, it may not pass. And, you know, I'd like the AdCom to be able to present a well-researched article, bring it to town meeting, have confidence in their position and be able to convince the town that this is the way to go. This is an opportunity that if we, if we miss, we may not get back to this for some time. So this is, it's important that AdCom fully vet this and, and go to town meeting with, and actually gain town meetings' confidence that their position is right.
I, I think it'll be important for us to attend the meetings with AdCom to make sure that any questions that do come up can be addressed quickly. We can get the information back and turn it around as quickly as possible and have it distributed to them so that they can, you know, keep moving in a forward direction.
Right, I think, I know that me, you and Ginny are going tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yeah.
And we'll try to be as, as many meetings as we can. And if we have information with us, so that you don't have to wait a week to get it, we'll go get it for you. Now, we can help out in that respect.
Yeah, I, I know one of the things last year that tripped us up was the funding plan. And we haven't heard anything about that yet, you know, that, how are we gonna, how are we gonna pay the debt on 8.5 million dollars?
Yeah.
That's what killed it last year.
It's an important question because the editorial stated it very well last week in the paper saying, you know, you're gonna spend $550,000 on the plans, you're obviously gonna go for the building. So I think this is a very big step. And, and the other thing is that, it, it's, I'm trying not to be repetitive here. It is important that they vet it, but the funding source, having a discussion with the Ag and Town Manager tonight, there is gonna be some part of a debt exclusion in this, there's no doubt about it. So no surprise to anybody, I don't think, so, and that, that'll come in as it, as the information comes in, it comes in. I'm relying on Randy to get that to you ASAP because that's the big factor. If, if we don't have, we're not gonna throw $550,000 away on something that we're not gonna approve in the spring. That's your big task, I think, is where the funding source, you can nail it right in the head. So I say we'll let them do, you know, I think we appeased everybody as much as we can here. The 4th, it's a Monday for Frank, everybody's kinda happy, we reduce it by six articles. So I think we'll be all right, you know, we'll all work together and get it done. And it comes to fruition, it comes to fruition. Is, anybody want to vote on the, give me a motion for the.
I just wanna clarify one thing. Tomorrow night, which is normally your orientation night, that's been postponed until the budget season begins? Or are you still gonna go through an orientation?
No, tomorrow night's gonna be a long night, I think. We're gonna do intros, orientation, I think Frank is gonna give his orientation. Randy's not gonna give the, you know, his.
The Town Finance 101, right, yeah.
Right, and then I think we're gonna, we're gonna do our rules. Before we can really conduct any business, we need to figure out how we're gonna conduct ourselves. Then we're, I think we're gonna do the reserve fund transfers. And I think there's something else after that. Liaison, right, go over the liaisons.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a long night.
Okay.
So we need to close the warrant and also vote on the date, correct?
And vote on the warrant. On every article, right?
We can do that at, at the next meeting?
Yeah, we got time for that. Yeah, we got time for that.
Yeah.
So.
Before we go into closing it, at the last meeting, we talked about having two specials. Is that something that's out? So this is the only special town meeting?
Well, I, I don't know. We're working on some contract negotiations. So if it looks like it may make some sense to, you know, have another one now that you're going to have some resolved contracts, maybe you do one in January or February.
Yeah, need be, but not, not any time between now and Christmas.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I think that's more important.
Okay, but so is there anything on here that can't wait a few more months? Because I, I know we whittled it down to six or seven articles, but there's, there's another capital expense building, there's a sewer service area. I just don't want to put too much and then we're trying to cram it the last minute and say if only we had pushed a couple off. That's not critical to this November special meeting.
Well, I mean, that was the question that was asked. It was, do these, do these absolutely have to be on? And the answers we're getting from Water and Sewer is yes, planning, yes.
And the transfer is yes.
They have to be on in November versus in January?
They felt.
So, so.
There's no guarantee of another meeting, so if, if there were no other meeting, these, these should be heard now.
So if this gets pushed off till, so, so if we plan tentatively for January, it never happens, and it gets moved to May, there's none of these that can wait till May? That's what we're hearing?
No.
Okay. What I, what I fear is because none of them can wait, there's going to be some unfinished business or a lot of anxiety and negative impact trying to put too much on. I don't know how to get around it if they're all saying it's, it's critical. I think that's the downfall. We have to be aware of that. There's a lot of work with town hall.
Well, Jim, you know, I mentioned before, you know, we could have stayed with our date in December and just have the, whoever the organization is that's going to create the plan for town hall. Somebody said, well, why can't AdCom work, you know, have more meetings? Well, why can't they have more meetings? You know, someone has said that there's something magical about a six-month window that they could, they need exactly that time to create a quality product.
And I, I think I agree with that.
And I'm not in the building trade, so I can't, I'm not going to say I know that process well. Maybe you can speak to that. But the thing is, it's, this is, in my mind, so important that AdCom be able to get this right and give town meeting the best advice they can.
And I think we're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
I think we are.
But I'm not sure anybody else is of the mind that we ought to move it to December. And I don't know, I don't know if that would jeopardize anything either.
Moving the town hall warrant article to, to December will not give you enough time for the, for the design bidding process, getting specs and drawings on a public environment, public bidding environment for May. So that's going to have to be pushed off.
And one other thing, Jim, what's going to be brought up too, and me and Bob talked about this earlier, is if you go for debt exclusion, you need a ballot and town meeting. So we have to be in pretty good gear for come May, for the election. I think is the, was it the 8th this year?
The 12th, the 7th.
7th? So you need to have that vote and town meeting if the funding, for the funding source.
Yeah.
If there's going to be a debt exclusion involved, so.
So I think we're in the position, we're trying to please everybody, and I'm just cautious that trying to please everybody is a detriment come May and follow it back to November.
No, I understand. I only wanted three, four articles on this, but everybody jumped on.
Let me ask the, you know, the controversial ones I see, obviously, is town hall. The DPW administrative offices, that seemed to come up lately, recently. It's someone from Water and Sewer that says, why can't that wait, a new building for DPW? And I'm putting it on Water and Sewer, but it's a DPW issue. That is going to take some time to understand it. Why can't that wait a few months, if not till May, where the? I'm speaking to you as your chairman, but I guess it's to everybody.
Well, no, no, and then we're going back to the round robin I had last week, have two special town meetings, but nobody liked the idea. I mean, so I was trying to get this down to three.
The DPW administrative offices, if they get pushed to May to the regular town meeting, what's the detriment in that? What, what funding source are we going to miss, or what timeline are we going to miss? I, I just don't know. I'm asking, I'm not.
Bob, come up to the mic. Otherwise, the only one going to be writing it down is Frank, and you never know if he'll get it right.
Never get it right, have I? If the DPW building doesn't pass a town meeting, at the special town meeting, the town hall project could change in its scope. I mean, if, if the Water and Sewer Department needs to stay within the town hall because we don't get this combined public works building, the town hall might just get bigger.
Yeah, but that building's so much smaller. It's a prefab building, Bob. If that was the way to probably the regular town meeting in May, that'll still beat town hall. That, that prefab process is.
But you're talking about designing this town hall, spending the $500,000 to design it. Then you have a building that's been designed that may not meet the needs of the town.
It's built for the future, so it's built to grow inside of. So I think there'd be, and I'm, I'm pretty sure there's plenty of room for the existing Water and Sewer Department to stay here. Because it's built for, what, 20, 30% expansion over 25 years, a debt of.
Yeah, but if you, if you haven't planned for them now, then there will be no expansion.
Well, then.
Because they'll take up all that space, so.
Doesn't.
Well, not to mention, well, sorry, Lorraine, nobody's going to be here anyways. You're going to be in another building. You're going to be moving everybody out here if you get the funding and the plans together by May to build a building here. If the plans get drawn, May 1st, or whenever, tell me, May 14th, I think it is now? And you'd have it on a ballot in May 7th.
May 4th.
So you're looking at, everybody here is getting relocated anyways.
Yeah, but I think what Bob's saying is, after they're relocating, they get to come back someplace.
Well, no.
If they come back to a town hall that's not designed for the Water and Sewer.
You can't, you can't build a house of car. I mean, I think that's a, that project is so small. You know, I know there's going to be some talk about what needs to be done, why the money and this and that, but it's a $600,000 project. The scope of that is so small. It's two prefab buildings. It's just going to be put on a lot, and that's it. Just like they did the temporary classrooms right down the street here when they expanded the school. It's a very simple process. It's just the funding. And your funding is not any debt exclusion or anything. So why would that be an issue in the, in the May? That should be pretty much a no-brainer, you know? So, but if Jim's valid, I mean, I can see that it would take some time away from, you know, getting a real grip on this project. I guess we're kind of asking, Bob, can you wait till May?
I, I really think that as far as the Water and Sewer Commission goes, we would really like to see this voted on this next season. Whether it's on this special town meeting or another one coming up soon, could it wait till January? Yeah, I expect it could wait till January, but I'm hearing there's no guarantee. There'll be another town meeting between now and the annual.
And you don't think it can wait till May?
No, I don't.
I think his point is a good one. If we don't have an answer for them, they've got to be planned for in the new town hall.
They're either in the plan or out of the plan.
They're either in there or they're out of there. So I think we need to know that before we design the plans for the new town hall.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Bob.
What?
Question?
Who's got a question? Well, you got to go up to the mic. You know the rules.
George Adler, Grandin Street 64. You're discussing new and improved town facilities to hire, to hold people. But you've got two separate tracks. I think the first step would be, what's the need? What's the function of all the town offices? And then work towards a solution. You've got a solution before you've identified what the issue is.
I don't see it that way at all.
You've got a solution for a separate building for Water and Sewer and a separate town hall.
And we're just asking if he can wait to have his, so he gives AdCom more time to vet this. But then in a round circle of conversation, they kind of clash together.
That's right. They do clash together.
But the, the whole, the whole, both articles are on there, so they, they wouldn't be inclusive.
Is your directive to have separate buildings?
That's what the articles show you. Absolutely. Article.
This goes back to the, the efforts that were done on the, with Castle Booze. They were given a directive.
Last year, the proposals that came forward?
On the concept, yeah.
So nothing's changed from that?
No.
Other than, other than things have gotten more expensive. I don't think the, the program has changed. Town Hall program hasn't changed, and the DPW program hasn't changed. So if you look at the Castle Booze design drawings, they did not include the staff for Water and Sewer because they're going down to the DPW.
I looked at the Castle Booze stuff. I also reviewed the Castle Booze work documents on their interviews and their program design. So I, I think I'm reasonably familiar with what they're proposing. I, I think that there is still some confusion as to what they're proposing and how it all interacts. But that'll, that'll come, come out when we debate it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, James, what are you thinking now?
It, it sounds like it is what it is from a bulk standpoint, that these have to be from, I mean, Water and Sewer's an elected board, Planning Board's an elected board. I think we'll do the best to ask them twice and three times, but if they need to be on it, we'll do the best. Maybe Plan B is if the advisory committee can look at it in a certain order.
Absolutely.
And have the veteran people that have been on this before jump in early to do more, some of the complicated ones and kind of rank them a little bit. And hope that they can go through them all.
The money transfer is one, two, and three. The money articles, four is town hall. And then the grand is five. Six would be the building.
Sewer service area is five.
Sewer service area is five?
Yeah.
Well, that's not anymore. What's more important, Bob, sewer service area or the building? As far as AdCom vetting it?
Sewer service.
All right, so that stays at five?
Should that become four?
And we'll get three, our money articles, correct? Or two, I mean, we got.
We got.
I can't talk and read at the same time.
The unpaid bills for the town managers, two. Number three is the $550,000 for the town hall.
All right, so one, two, and three stay the same. Four would be.
Article five.
Article five becomes article four. And I'm, anybody can jump in here. And then I would say, then put the two planning board articles in. And if they get to the, the building for the Water and Sewer, that'd be the last article I'd want them to look at.
Where'd you put the sewer district now?
That's four.
Four.
You said that's prioritized. You know what? The board's amendable. We have to, they can't vet all these out. We'll have another meeting in the fall, January, I mean, January or February. It'll happen. It's not that big a deal. It really isn't. As long as I don't miss Christmas again. So I hear a motion to close the.
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. And then, motion for a town meeting? Special town meeting, I should say.
Hold on a second. I move that the Board of Selectmen set the date for a special town meeting on Monday, November 4th.
7:30 PM at the high school? That's typical.
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Time to get to work, everybody, I guess. And then we've got one more action item for search committee. Yeah. Now, we still have that on the agenda tonight. Do we want to put that on the next agenda, you know, so we can all think that process through and that we want to go down that road?
Yeah, I'd like to, because I think I may want to have a call and then check some references.
So Bob, can we add that decision on Collins' group?
And if we make a positive decision to go with Collins' group, then we'll.
And then we'll already, funding would be there.
We'd do the funding source that night.
Do the funding right afterward.
Okay.
So you want to hold the funding source? You want AdCom to vet this now? Because what do we vote for? Then, you know? We can always put it back.
Well, if you decide to go a different route, then we'd have to go out for bid, and there may be a different.
Price would be different.
Okay, all right, so we'll hold on that. Yeah, good call, Lorraine. All right, so is there anything else to discuss this evening?
Um, I know you didn't do, you didn't do, um.
I did.
Not citizens input, update, but they've got a McGinty, the McGinty fundraisers on this weekend. You've got the, on the Friday night, there's an email that.
It's the 20th and, the MIA visual.
On Friday night, yeah.
Um, I can read it from the, um.
It was an email that was sent.
Yeah, I got it right here. See, Michael Johns.
It's tomorrow. I didn't hear much discussion about the McGinty.
Yeah, yeah. Flagged at Hofstaff tomorrow. And it doesn't say why, is it at Hofstaff?
Uh, it would be 9/11.
Nine, oh, Dev, thank you. You are all expected to see McGinty Fund Day activities on Foxville Common Saturday in memory of Michael McGinty, a hometown veteran who perished in the fatal day 12 years ago. And then, so that's this Saturday on the Common.
What time, Mark?
It's 11:00 or 4:00 usually. You've been involved in everyone in the past except for the last two years. And then Friday, September 20th, is National POW MIA Day. A 24-hour missing man candlelit visual will start on the Common at 4:00 PM on Saturday, the 21st. And Jack Hockler, that was brought, no, was it Jack last week, or Mike brought that up? I think it was Jack.
Jack did.
So you've all been formally invited in your agenda binders, so. But no, McGinty's a big fundraiser for college funds, funds for two different scholarships. One for a child in Mansfield, right, and one for a Foxborough child because, or teenager, I should say. Because Mike ties to Mansfield, I believe. I'm not sure the exact reason, but I think they're both 5,000 apiece. And every year with the fundraising from this, it, it keeps the, the scholarships going, so hopefully you can all make it. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.